Good evening. It is now 6:01 for Monday, July 21st. We will go ahead and get started with our meeting. We have all councilors present and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will open it up to public comment. If there is anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak and may come to the podium and introduce themselves. Again, for the people that are joining us online, we are opening it up for public comment. If there is anything that you would like to come to the, to speak on Zoom. Not hearing anything and not seeing anything, we will move on to item 103, Discussion and Consideration of the Town Manager's Contract. And so it has, we have a contract for continuation of an additional two years.
So there's a year left on the current agreement. And so this would be a two-year extension that would go through the end of the fiscal year in 2028.
The councilors had enough time to read through all of the documentation? Are there any discussion, any questions?
About your, about your contract. The only question I had is, and it's just me being nitpicky, I guess, is looking at your vacation and sick time. And it seems like, you know, I've only been here two years, having most employment and getting up to five weeks right now. I'm willing to kick it up to a four, four week. And then after your next term, it would be, again, willing to add another week to it.
So my current agreement, so what you're seeing is an amended agreement. My current agreement called for five weeks after the first year.
It did.
It did.
Because I saw it said three.
Yeah.
And then it, and I struck it, so it was struck out.
It was three the first year and then five the second.
Okay.
That's why you're always gone.
I'm right. Stick around.
Haven't had a vacation in six months. I wanted to go with you and Christian to the Bahamas or wherever you went, but.
Thank you for clarifying them.
Not so much a question, just wanted to address this to the council. I had come up, I was thinking that maybe should, we should also seek review from either the town attorney or maybe an independent, because I know they work closely, whatever it might be. I just thought that might be something we want to consider.
So as far as the contract goes, this has been reviewed by our attorney previously.
Yeah.
The amendments to this is basically just updating the language. So that way it is in line with what was already posted in it. That instead of an initial contract, it is just a continuation of the contract.
We always look at it.
And so also just to add to this, I have received two letters from half and from residents, one of which, the town council has my full support in extending the town manager's contract. From what we have observed, Anthony has performed his duties admirably, is easy to work with, and in general is a great asset to the town of Winthrop. Please do not hesitate in extending his contract. Please feel free to share with the other members of the town council. Gil Soucy, Winthrop, Maine. And then also I have a letter here. Dear councilors, we are writing jointly as Richard Fortin, your library director, and Joanne Lebrun, your library board chair. Consistency in leadership matters. Frequent turnover disrupts progress. And I'm highlighting some of the things here. Not, there you go. From building. Thank you. Momentum needed to achieve lasting improvements. When you look at communities across Maine that have made real sustained improvements, you'll find that they often have leadership that remains in place long enough to build relationships, understand the community, and see projects through from start to finish. Stability at the top creates stability throughout the organization. Of course, longevity alone is not reason enough to reappoint a town manager, but Anthony has demonstrated the qualities that make longer-term leadership valuable. He provides some of the most effective communication we have seen from a town manager since Cornell Light Knight left in 2011. He communicates openly with the public and across all departments. For the library, he maintains direct, transparent communication with both director and the board of trustees, ensuring we are always informed and involved in decisions that affect our services. Anthony also actively seeks partnerships, whether it is securing grant funding to improve AV equipment for both the library and the town office, utilizing library spaces for community forums, or including the library director on hiring committees. His collaborative approach fosters teamwork that benefits the entire town. Finally, Anthony is solutions-focused, a quality not always present in previous managers. He is proactive, forward-thinking, and consistently looks for ways to improve services, streamline processes, and support staff across departments. For these reasons, we fully and enthusiastically endorse Anthony's reappointment.
I totally agree with this letter. I think he's done a wonderful job and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract. Extend the town manager's contract to June 30th, '28, under the terms as drafted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor.
At one point of discussion, I just wanted to say to the folks who are here, a lot of friends in the audience, and I appreciate the support that I've gotten from the community. When I interviewed for this job, I told the council I wanted this to be my last job. And two years into it, I still firmly feel that way. And I'm no, not, not close to retirement. So I'm looking forward to a really long run of serving the good folks of Winthrop for a really long time. I appreciate the council for all the support that you've given me. You know, it's sort of unusual in this day and age for a council to hire a town manager, give him clear direction, and then allow him to, to do, or her, to do the job. And that's exactly what you've done. And so I very much appreciate the people around this table as well. And I'm looking forward to a long and prosperous run, both for me and for the town of Winthrop.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we'll move on to item 104, Discussion of Cemetery Rules Proposed by the Cemetery Committee. And I do see we have a full house as far as the cemetery committee tonight. Would anyone like to come to the podium to the go over? Mr. Nielsen?
Yep. Good evening, council members, and thank you for your attention to our draft. This is a project that has come to you after, couple of years anyway, of discussion and work by the cemetery committee. What you have before you is the product of many discussions, many hours, and many meetings. And I mention that only in to say that there may be individual elements that anyone could disagree with, even members of the committee. But we represent, we recognize that representing the community is of our prime significance and importance here, and that's what we've tried to achieve with the draft that we've given you. Our principal drafter is here tonight, Mike Levy, a member of the committee, former attorney, longtime resident of Winthrop. And he will speak to many of the things that you may wish to question us on. But if there's anything that we can answer, we have an ample representation from the committee tonight to help do that. So with that, I'll turn the matter over to questions.
I had a citizen send me an email and it's, I guess when I read it, I thought it was good and some of the involvement I had with you guys earlier on, when you guys were writing the rules. They were discussing about for how long, on Article Four, Number Seven, which limits the various remembrages for thirty, to thirty days. This family's a long life, a long family. It's been lived in the town, it's a Cobb family. And they sometimes put out urns with flowers in it, in a, a flower box, and they maintain it throughout the year. Is that going to be, is that one of the items that would have to be removed within thirty days? Because they, what they do is they put it out, I guess Memorial Day, and then they remove them in the fall. So is that something that you guys were looking at? Or you were just thinking like other momentous things or?
I think I can speak great committee on that.
Great.
No one is going to run around with a clock or a calendar saying your thirty days are up. Get it out of here. What the item is intended to deal with are those items that we've all seen that linger too long. And the, the season winds on, you get to the end of the season, people don't come back to clean things up.
Or maintain.
Or maintain. And so they, it gives the sexton the opportunity to remove the items that are no longer slightly. But anything that obviously has importance to the family is not something that we're targeting. So I think the member that raised that question can rest easy.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Mr. Levy has some comments that he'd like to make if you've got a chance to work him in.
Members of the council, my name is Michael Levy, and I'm a retired lawyer. And my, one of my principal retirement activities is to be a member of your cemetery committee. And I've been on the committee since about late, early 2002, I believe. And we have today offered to you for your thinking and hopefully ultimate approval, a set of cemetery rules. And I just wanted to give you a quick background. When I joined this committee in 2022, our visionary leader, Bob Pelletier, was still running the cemetery committee. And, and he had many things on his agenda, making sure or hoping to get started on the repair of the cemeteries that need repair. If you look at Maple Cemetery, you can thank Bob Pelletier for that. And we're on our way and we are repairing cemeteries. But Bob was not satisfied to do only that. He had begun the process of making us think about, should we have a set of rules for our cemetery? And Winthrop has a set of rules for the cemeteries. It's 33 years old and has not been amended since it was enacted 33 years ago. So Bob started the effort. After that, our committee, we continued with Bob's effort. And we developed a subcommittee, which was myself and Priscilla Stevens. And we worked for a while on, on the idea of, of an ordinance. And we came up with some things that we thought were helpful for the cemeteries, but they really weren't part of a comprehensive ordinance. There was this idea over here and this idea over here. And so my obsessive compulsive nature and having been practiced law, I ended up being the principal drafter of this document. And I would say that we, my notes show that the first discussions we had about this were in August of 2022. So we're moving on to three years worth of work on this document. We didn't work on it 100% of the time, all the time. But we, it was on the agenda of many of our meetings. And even though I'm the drafter, what you see before you is, is the result of a lot of discussion and frankly, a lot of homework as well in drafting this document for your consideration. We looked at the cemetery rules for Winthrop, Augusta, Monmouth, St. Peter and Paul in Lewiston, Greedfield, Vasselboro, another cemetery, which I think is in Lewiston called St. Peter's, China, Baldwin Hill, that's Kennebec, Kennebec, help me, Land Trust, that's their green cemetery. And we looked at, and we paid particular attention to this one because we think Anthony developed it, Belgrade's cemetery ordinance. So the draft that we provide for you is the result of that kind of review, that period of time of effort. I thought I'd highlight a couple of provisions just to give you a little flavor for what we did. And then if you have questions, I'll certainly try to field them or, or have my colleagues deal with it. One of the things that I think was very interesting to me and turned out to be a motivating factor here was we wanted people who use our cemeteries or who want to use our cemeteries in the future to feel that they had some voice in what the plot that they had or for their family member. We didn't want to over-regulate. We wanted people to feel that they could do to a certain extent what they wanted. On the other hand, we know the town has to administer the cemeteries and they need to be maintained, they need to be mowed, they need to be raked, the roads need to be safe. So the other motivation for us was to try to write a set of rules that would allow the cemeteries to be reasonably maintained without undue expense. Those were, I think, two of our motivating factors. I'm going to highlight just a few sections and then I'll take your questions. In section, in the introduction, there is a discussion of the role of the committee, what we do. And if you read through that, that's Section Three. We have tried to make the committee into a policymaking organization, to try to write rules and look at what we think is in the best interest of the town for the cemeteries. But to leave to the town and the town manager and the administration of the town, the administration of this ordinance, we are not, and we think that's the proper division between a committee that makes recommendations and the administration of town business. And that section sets forth, I think, goals and plans for us, which are not administrative, but rather are in the, in the area of policy setting. Another area that I bring your attention to is the transfer of a cemetery lot. So somebody buys a cemetery lot and they select not to use it. And what kind of, what kind of policies might be involved in the transfer? Well, we came up with the thought that we did not want people to be real estate speculators in dealing with the cemeteries. So if you buy a lot in the cemetery, under the terms of this ordinance, you can give it to someone that you care about, but you cannot sell it. If you want to sell it, sell it back to the town. We talked about who can be buried in the lot. Some communities say the only person that can be buried, it's only the residents of the town or residents that have lived in the town for six months. Going back to our, our value judgment that we want people to have reasonable control. If an owner has a cemetery lot and wants a friend, a loved one, an associate, regardless of where they live, that person can be buried in that lot. What we're saying here is that we believe people are going to use these things in good faith. Why else would you buy a cemetery lot? So it can be, any person can be interred there that the owner wants to interr. In the same setting, we've talked about what kind of monuments can be on the lots. And what we came up with was if you have, I keep saying if you own a lot, I'll talk about that in a minute. We're not going to have people owning lots. They're going to be owning interment rights, the rights to bury, but they're not going to own the piece of land. And of course, the right to bury somebody there is a permanent right, once they've done that. But with respect to stones, what we've said is essentially, if you look around our cemeteries, you can see stones of various designs. Some of them have little statuettes on them, some of them are very plain, some of them are more ornate. And we didn't want to tell people you could have a stone as long as it's only this high and this wide and has this kind of lettering on it. And people can use their discretion and do what they feel is appropriate. It has to be approved by the sexton and the sexton has to be guided by, it needs to be safe. It need, if somebody says I want a monument that's six inches wide and 400 feet tall, we expect the sextons to say that's not too safe. But, so safety is important, stability of, of the monument is important. And finally, the reasonable needs to maintain the cemetery need to be considered when the sexton approves the lot. So we give people discretion, but we have some limits subject to the decision-making of our expert, the sexton. So that's what we're doing with stones. And I think you can see the, the flow here is let's try to respect people's wishes as much as possible. Let's give them the most flexibility we can, but let's also have some administration and some reasonable relationship to maintenance and cost. See if there's anything else. Well, we talk about vehicles, we talk about substances, we talk about dogs, we talk about guns, we talk about how you behave in the cemetery. All that stuff is very clear in this rules. And so I'm not going to take you through that, but you, you can see that we've tried to think about people using our cemeteries in a respectful way and people not feeling that they're locked out and they can never go into the cemetery. We talk about who the lot goes to, who the interment rights go to if the owner passes away. And what we did in that is there is a state statute that talks about who gets the remains of a deceased. And that statute says if, if the person who is now deceased put their feelings in writing, those feelings are honored. If there is no such thing, then that statute goes through a whole hierarchy. It's spouse, then children, then grandchildren, then uncles, then aunts. I don't, and we have mirrored that so that, that in the event there was an issue like who gets it, that's how that's resolved. We have relied on the state statute. We've also talked about abandonment. What happens if somebody acquires interment rights and it sits there for 50 or 60 years? And we've talked about that we, it may be helpful for that space to be used, that the people who own it may have deliberately decided not to use it, but didn't follow through with anything else. And so this statute or this ordinance proposes that after 50 years, we make a good faith effort to find out who's owns it and say to them, we, we might deem this abandoned, but if you want to reacquire it because you're still interested in it after all this time, please do so. And if not, this is going to revert to the ownership of the town. I think that's all I need to do to give you the highlights. And I hope I haven't taken too much of your time. And what can we do for you?
Linda, you have a question?
If you've got family members there and you're 80, like me, and maybe I still want to go there, well, maybe it's time to renew my ownership. To, so to show that there is an active interest in still using this. And we create that opportunity. We must look for the owner and approach the owner and say, this is about to be abandoned, but we will not abandon it if you want to reacquire it.
Mike, great presentation. I know how hard you all worked. The one thing that concerns me, given various spates of vandalism, is that you think about a curfew for the cemetery usage.
I don't think these rules thought, have talked about that. There's, I think, I think it's a fine idea personally. So either we might be able to offer an amendment or maybe it's something that in the town's administration of the cemeteries that can be done without it needing to be part of an ordinance. But saying that there's a time at night after which you should not be in the cemetery, that makes sense to me.
It's not a deal breaker. I'm happy with what we have. I just wondered if it was a thought, be considered.
Well, the thought may have been inspired by you just this minute, so thank you.
And so let me just explain a little bit about the process. We're not actually going to be adopting anything tonight because we wanted to bring these rules to you so you could have a discussion with the cemetery committee and offer any changes. This has not yet been submitted to the town's attorney and he'll probably put it in a different form so that we can codify it. And then we'll go through the process of having, you know, first public hearing, second public hearing before, before adoption. But, but Linda's absolutely correct. If we're going to have a curfew and if it's to be enforced, then it needs to be in the ordinance. And so maybe while we're all here, it'd be good to discuss what that, what that curfew might look like.
I would have preferred to leave that up to the cemetery, ready to make that decision.
Okay.
They may not want a curfew. I mean, it was just a thought thrown out there for you to consider.
Okay, so if, if they want a curfew, whatever they, they propose, you're going to be supportive of. Okay.
Oh, likelihood. Speaking for myself.
Just have a question. Thank you very much for all of the work that you guys have done. Is, is there any section in here that addresses a relationship with a funeral director or any entity that would be performing services?
The rules do not select any, any business. We, the funerals must be done in accordance with a professional funeral director. Stones or monuments must be installed by professionals.
Does that say that in here?
Yes.
It does? Okay. And then as far as, you guys talked about greens, green burial spaces. Has that topic come up within the committee?
It has not.
Okay, because I mean, obviously if that's something that does come to fruition, then this would have to be amended, which obviously could be done.
Right, right. And it, it seems to me that that would be a very interesting and worthwhile thing to examine at the time that new land is being acquired for additional cemetery lots.
Thank you.
Steve Frillen, did you have a question?
Oh, we knew that all along.
Did see that our public works director is here as well. And that's something that you've discussed. I did notice that there was the maintenance of trash can receptacles and things as well.
We, we had several meetings where the director
We had several meetings where the Director of Public Works was present, and he's been through the drafts of this. And if I'm saying it right, has said it's okay with him. And the other thing I would mention that I failed to mention was that our liaison, Jim Steele, was in on some of this and was most helpful. And that your town manager and your town clerk took a good, hard look at these the first time we sent them in, and came up with a lot of format, grammar, and syntax, significant things to make it better, and asked extremely good questions about how this would fit with the administration of the town. And we had a lot of help, and some of those things are now in this draft.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Levy, and to the Cemetery Committee and Mr. Pelletier. Three years and a suitcase full of notes. We do appreciate all the work that's gone into this. So far, I think the council, everything looks good. So, I believe the next process will be going to the town's attorney for a legal review, as Anthony was stating, and then we'll see that come back to us for final approval.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you come up with stuff in the meantime, let us know.
Thank you very much. You want to say something, Mr. Pelletier? Yes, you can come up.
He can bring you the microphone.
Well, thank you, thank you. My name is Bob Pelletier, and I've been on the Cemetery Committee for a while. And first, I want to thank the writers in the committee. You know, Michael did an outstanding job with this. It took years. And they're all a little different, those policies from town to town. But we tried to make those complicated policies fit this town. And that was a difficult thing to do. So, I want to thank him for his work. I want to thank Mr. Steele for attending some of the meetings. Now, I have not seen you there, because I'm not going. But I heard you were there, so forth, so thank you for doing your job.
I've been pretty busy lately, but yes.
And the chairman, of course, is Mr. Peter, and he's done a very good job. All right. I have a few comments. Some are good, some are bad, and you're free to just say. It's up to you. First one is Article 1, Chapter 1A. It says, "A lot owner gets interment rights and not ownership." Now, Mike mentioned that a while ago, but people still think they're going to own a grave. They don't. The cemetery is owned by you people. And they buy a right to bury someone there, and that's all they have. So, we need... And the town always says, I want to buy a lot. Well, not quite so. Let me turn the page, if I can. Okay. And under other agreements in there, it says to work to omit all verbal agreements. That's between the sexton, the funeral director, and so forth. And that's very important. You're staying in a cemetery in a rainstorm. It's very easy to say you can be buried here, but it needs to be in writing to inform the town. The key member here is the town to keep records of all these things. So, don't let that go by, okay? All right. There's one over here that I don't really understand, and it's Transfer Building, Section 3. And these pages are hard to turn. And Section 1. It reads that if the deceased indicates in writing, signed by the deceased, the permit... I'm lost already. Deceased can't write anything. So, the words need to change. And it's not a criticism, it's just an observation. And the problem is, after you look at this for three years, it just looks like jumble, and it makes sense to go through. So, it's not a criticism, it's a fresh look. And it ought to be clear. All right, the next one is number 5, who may be entered in a lot, and it's already been mentioned. Any person the owner designates. And we have people buried in our lots from New York, all over the place. But they're there legally, and that's perfectly fine. And sometimes people say, well, I don't live there, and that should not be a problem. Interment rights, we're at the bottom. It says, "Interment rights may be deemed to abandon after the lot has been used for 50 years." 50 years is not enough. In my case, I bought my lot. My wife passed away, 48 years. Two more years, and I wouldn't own the lot anymore. But the next person buried there is my son, who, he was buried there 59 years after we bought the lot. So, 50 is low. I know it sounds like a big number if you're young. If you're old, it goes by like a second. So, don't worry about it. You should take care of that. All right, right here. Oh, yes, at the bottom. "The town should use reasonable effort." You're asking for trouble. Because what's reasonable to me as a citizen, reasonable to the sexton as a worker, and reasonable to the town over here, is going to be discussed, argued about, and you'll end up in a terrible mess. Take what you want, you can defend that, because of what you want. But reasonable mess, and it says reasonable on two sides, the reasonable decision by the town, reasonable decision by the land person. They're never going to be... Because if you're greedy, because someone is dying, you want the best. And I may not be able to fall for the best. And it's going to end up giving you work, giving the town complications. So, that's on page 5. All right. Let's see, oh, Article 2, Perpetual Care. "Each interment right lot has perpetual care provided by the town." Perfect. That's been going on since the first grave was there. "Perpetual care includes mowing, trimming, and maintenance of the lot." Perfect. But you know, you approve the budget, and the budget gives you $55,000 to repair the roads in one side. This does no mention of roads. So, the conflict in your own argument right here. All right, either the roads are in perpetual care definition, and then when you approve the $50,000 budget for that, you're all set. But it's not being declared that way. I feel it shouldn't be there, but that's another issue. That is Article 2 on page 5. All right. Article 2 on page 5, Article 3, Section 5. "Remains may not be scattered." Remains are scattered every day on the lakes, in town, at the farming farm. They can't be scattered. Sure, they can be scattered, but inform the town is the important part. But people will do what they have to do and want to do. They may not even own a lot, but sure, they can be scattered. And then, that's there. The next one is on page 6, number 4 on top. "No fences, rails, permanent flag posts..." Oops, no, too high. Sexton, "No settees or benches are allowed." Rulemakers do a great job of saying no. No smoking, no standing, no spitting. People in a position of authority should be positive. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit a while later. But if you can write those rules down in a positive way, it leaves a much better taste in the reader's mouth, okay? And number 5. Again, the sexton has the discretion to permit settees, benches, and so forth. So, the first sentence is, "No settees or benches are allowed." The next sentence says, well, the sexton can discuss that. Qualification, and it's going to come back to hurt you. So, either you do it, or you don't. Next chapter is, all right, number 5, Article 5 on page 5. Letter A. "Include dimensions and so forth of all stones will have to be approved." Right now, people are stoned of any kind they want in their cemetery. All right, and I know what happens. People are sad, they wanted the right thing, this person's a great giant in town. How many people in this room, if I lived here for a long time, know who Dr. ... Gee, I can't think of his name. Shaw, I think it's Shaw, was. Probably no one. Whoop, a little wobbly. But his stone is the highest this room. It's 20 feet high. And the town did a good job by putting that up for him. I'm going to have to hold on here. Thank you. The town did a job by providing that for him, but you have to pay the cleaning fees for the rest of this town's life. It's going to take it right down the drain, because stones have not been defined. And when you define a stone, you need to think of the maintenance. Every time you allow a bench, every time you allow a flower, means someone's got to get off the tractor, move things around, and we have over 6,000 graves. Do that every week, 1 minute, 6,000 minutes. It's going to drain you, defining the place where you want the thing to be. And you know, I think you'll be a lot happier. All right. And we're at the bottom. "All monuments must be professionally prepared." Really? You know, again, this is where we're dealing with people. You may all have money to buy a stone, but to go to a cemetery and you have people with wooden crosses, that's all they could afford. That's all they could afford. We have people with a rock that's painted on it, daddy. That's all they could afford. If you be careful with the definition of stone and how it's put up, because they may have some problems, and that needs to be considered. I agree that professionally prepared is the right thing to do. The installment of the stone. None of these stones are installed properly. They're wobble and so forth. But if we're down, and I encourage you tonight, Maple's just been finished. When you leave here, go down Morton, go up in the cemetery, and drive through. You'll see a beautiful cemetery that three years ago was a dump. It's beautiful. But on your right, there's a fair new stone. Gamash is the name of it, okay? And when I went by a year ago, the man was installing the stone. He was in the hole up to here. The stone starts four feet down, below the frost line. All of our stones are laying on top. Frost, heave, fall. Now, you can't correct that, but you surely, from now on, make this stone properly installed. And it will save you a lot of trouble and a lot of maintenance fees over the years. All right. let's see, what's this one? All right, Section 11. Oh, yes. Article 11 on page 7 is kind of funny. "The following substances are prohibited: tobacco, alcohol, cannabis, and so forth." Too loose, too loose. Tobacco and e-cigarettes are legal, but you can omit those. But if you start listing the illegal ones, there's no end to it. They'll always find another one. Simply say, anything that's illegal, cut that right out. Could not be a problem. Article 9 is dogs, like I said a minute ago. I don't want to complain too much, but we still have people buried at home. And the town doesn't even know about it. It should be in the policy. Say, if someone dies in town, and you'll never catch them all, because they pass away, they live on the farm or someplace, and I feel bad for them, but they don't have the money, they'll bury the person at home. It still happens today, but you don't know about it. More importantly, the town doesn't know about it. They keep their records of who's living here. So, you need something to say, you need to do this. And it's always hard to pitch it to people, but it needs to be done. All right. The article about the dog. So, you start off, it's an example, after this, you can rest. It starts off by saying, "Dogs must always be on the leash." And then the second part is, "A dog walker must pick up the waste immediately and carry it out to the cemetery." And the third part, it's the last one, "The dog walker is responsible for the cost of repairing any damage." Now, there are six commands in that little thing, dogs, that are negative. Make it positive. For instance, "Winthrop citizens are proud of their cemeteries by asking all people to leash their dogs and by maintaining a sanitary conditions." It's positive, and makes the people feel better, and they don't mind working with you. All right. That's all I really have. I didn't mean to bend your wrist for quite this long, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pelletier.
I need to get the... Well, it was like this.
105, Discussion of Potential Community Action Grant Projects. And on July 7th, we did discuss this as a council for our third community action grant application through the State's Community Resilience Partnership. Now, we've discussed primarily open space planning as well as conducting energy audits on municipal facilities. Our staff, town manager, has presented an excellent memorandum with a recommendation that we consider both, with an example of several towns that have done open space plans ranging anywhere from $25,000 up to about $80,000, with a typical cost of around $50,000. Thank you very much. And then also, energy costs typically spend around $25,000, which may be sufficient. So, we have a couple of examples ranging from $2,500 up to about $33,000. Is there any discussion from the council?
I think I spoke in the last, not the last meeting, but the meeting we had this discussion. I see you did some good homework here. You're still concerned of having enough money to make sure we complete an energy audit at the ambulance building, and consider that kind of priority, number one. If granted, and we win the $75,000 resilience money, I would still really, kind of really like to kind of shave it to a core where even at $40,000 for the open space, it looks like somebody still falls within somewhere in that range. I know that's various prices. But it would give us still that $35,000, because even some of them, you know, Old Orchard had $33.5 for their energy audit. I just want to make sure that, I feel that's a huge hit, that we really need to make sure we take care of that building, where it wasn't probably built properly.
Yeah, so with Old Orchard, Jim, I think it's important to note that $33.5, that's not just for the energy audit, but then the implementation of the upgrades that were recommended as a result of the audit. And as you can see here, I talked to a number of different communities. And in fact, yes, Orno. Orno did an audit of five of its buildings, and it was 17.5. So, again, I do feel confident that we can do both of these things in the 75, and we can prioritize the buildings that we want to do the energy audit in. I agree with you, ambulance one, police station two. We've also talked about doing the library as well, just to make sure that we're doing that.
Consider the YMCA.
The recreation building as well. So, there were actually four buildings, and those were the four, I think.
Yeah, with that, with this money, and help me understand this, the audit, because as you said, Old Orchard used it to actually make the improvements. We could still use that money to help make that improvements, right, after the audit?
I think it depends upon what's left. So, assuming that there's some money left over, and we can make some of those changes, I think that that's a distinct possibility.
It's within the rules, right?
Yes. Yes. But in addition to, well, what I might suggest is if we're going to do that, we should scale back the scope of the audit, just to ensure there are still funds available, unless the council wanted to either use undesignated fund balance.
Well, that's where I'm going with it.
Or a capital reserve.
We don't use this money for, you know, the audit, and then the repairs, it's gonna come back to us on our normal budget. And you see this as an angle where we could get this done without being a burden on anything that we had from normal day taxes. So that's just my thought process on it.
I think there's also, if we were to do the energy audit, I also think there's a distinct possibility we could get a grant after that to help pay for the upgrades.
Um, so I'm definitely in agreement that the open space on, you know, energy audit are probably the best uses, or hopefully, you know, will boast well for the application. I recall an energy audit, and Linda, you might remember this, that was done when I was working at the ambulance station. I remember them coming in, I remember them going through the building with fine, I mean, they literally went up into the space, the crawl space up, and, and it was, they made us put things, the, we had a, I think it was a soda machine, they made us put those things that turn it on and off as necessary. And so there was an energy audit. I don't know where you could find that, and if it would be helpful at this point.
Well, I'm just thinking of.
Yeah, there definitely was that done. And of course, obviously, probably doing this a little, you know, cart, you know, cart before the horse thing, now that we've already put the units in. But I do think it's necessary. There may be some benefit to looking at it, I don't know if there is, but there definitely was one done.
Well, luckily, our town clerk is here, and she's really good at, she's really good at research on these, on these sort of topics. It's interesting, you would've thought they would've said, hey, you guys might wanna put some insulation in this building, you know?
Not sure how well it will be to help, but.
Andy?
Yeah, I, I actually think Linda's right. It seems I recall years ago, we did something over in that building. It might've been just as they were switching from police to town hall. I was curious if Brelo Holmes made any proposals when they looked at the ambulance building?
They did. It was a $71,000 proposal, and so now we're seeking a fourth estimate. Yes.
It's just, I'm just curious to see if that to us at some point.
What's that?
Like, did they have specifics?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Think I could.
As your memo goes.
Just curious.
You can, I mean, I think it's, that's more administrative in nature at this point, and, and I don't think that the MMA is going to pay $71,000 or something. So, so that's why, in fact, it was Mike Ketchin who, who provided me the contact information for a fourth vendor, and so now we're reaching out to that vendor as well.
As this is written and the research that's gone into it, I think that this is presented fairly well. I think 50,000 seems like a reasonable cost for an open space plan with the additional 25,000. And like, you did confirm that the community action grant can go towards multiple projects. And so this is an August 29th deadline. Is this something that the council would be comfortable moving forward with?
So one thing to Jim's point, I think there's gonna be a really good opportunity, and I emailed you folks about this, I think, last week. August 1st, representatives from the Community Resilience Partnership are going to be visiting Winthrop. And so Jim, that's one of the questions we'll ask, is can we prioritize these buildings? And, you know, if we, should we maybe cut back the number in order to actually use some of the grant funds, in order to implement some of the recommendations? And what would be the possibility if after our energy audit is done, that we, that we could then apply for a fourth community action grant in order to implement some of the recommendations? So I think there's gonna be a good opportunity to flesh some of that out with the people who administer the grant.
So I had a question from Andy, and then James, and then Aaron, and then Roy.
So it, perhaps it's a lack of understanding, I'm sure it is. I still remain concerned about open split, open space plans versus property rights. You know, how does that work? You know, where does, is there gonna be a conflict between people that own property and looked at the zoning and have plans for that property, only to find out that the zoning has been changed?
No, Don's here, and Corinne, do you wanna speak to this, Corinne? Or someone from the Conservation Commission?
Good evening, everybody, Steve McDermott. Andy, I'm just gonna reframe your question to make sure I'm answering the right question here. Your question is, does an open space plan change what somebody can do with their property and their ability to do so in the future? And, okay. An open space plan does not change zoning, nor does it change an allowable use. In the town of Winthrop, we have a zoning ordinance, which prescribes multiple zones which allow, indicate different eligible uses, such as residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural. An open space plan identifies areas of land that have rich biodiversity, might be best for connector trails. I often think about our ITS system for snowmobiles. Prime land for connection could be identified in an open space plan that says, if an opportunity becomes available to work with a landowner, this is a prime opportunity to connect to high priority trails. So I think that's one thing. It does not say, or limit anybody's deeded rights, or change the municipality zoning ordinance. It just is, it is a planning tool to help the community look forward to things that may or may not occur. And I wanna pause there, and I wanna, if I could answer a question that, Jim, you had the other day, about development. I think when we talk about open space plans, the focus is on, what do you do in open space? But the silent part of that, or the other side of that coin, is oftentimes identifying high priority lands that would be better used, or have a highest and best use, that is not for open space fans or conservation, such as housing or commercial development. So there's an opportunity to do a couple things as we look at that plan. But to your question, Andy, it doesn't change what somebody's allowed to do. It doesn't say, in the future, thou shall not. It says, the community might be interested in, is the way that I think of it.
There, there's not gonna be any push to change that stuff, correct, the regulations and?
Yeah, the, the open space plan is agnostic to, right? It just says, this is what you might look for.
I just, I just wants to make sure that's not a tool to have, you know, this stuff designated, and then lobby for, used to lobby for a change.
I can't make any promises about what anybody other than I can do, and I probably can't even guarantee what I'll do in 15 years anyway, right? But if, if there is a group that says, wow, this was identified as an open space plan, this was identified in an open space plan as a high priority area for deer migration, and then a property goes up for sale, they might use that plan to say, we will fundraise to buy that property. Could somebody use this in the future and come to a town council meeting and say, here's an open space plan, we'd like you to consider this? Sure. But.
But it would still be, it would still come to us. Domain situation, or whatnot, it's still, would still come to this board. We may not be here to.
Well, it's true. I mean, but that could happen anytime. This is, this like, you know, it's not regulatory, it's not, it's literally just identifying stuff so we can prioritize whatever we decide.
Just wanna make sure it's not a situation where you identify it as a deer migration lane, and all of a sudden, it, where it's a push toward, this piece of property needs to be into resource protection.
Yeah, I, you know, again, I can't make a promise that anybody won't do anything. But could somebody? Yes. Is that likely? Have we seen that in other communities? I am not fully aware that that has happened in other communities, where once an open space plan has been input, or put into place, that then there is this, this nefarious group that shows up and says, I don't mean to be glib, I'm thinking of the old cartoons where somebody pops up and goes, aha! I don't, that's not the intent of it. And I don't, I am unaware of a situation where that has occurred. Those are often much more forthright efforts that have taken place over a long time, and you've had some good conversations over two meetings where there were conversations about how, what it actually takes one to just acquire property. And then I think, to speak to Aaron's point, it actually would have, if you wanted to change the zoning ordinance, it would have to be proposed to the planning board. The planning board would have to hold their processes, then they would have to bring it to the town council. So there's a pretty strong process in place to ensure that property, land uses don't change overnight, or, you know, without intentional thought and guidance.
So, Stephen, thank you, coming up and explaining that, because that did help, some of the explanation there. With that, I would also may mention that Grania is coming. I, I think I would like to wait before I did anything, me personally, and have to ask a few questions to her, from the resilience program, for the next meeting.
On, on August the 1st?
Yeah. I, me personally, I'm just saying for the group, but I just, I would like her to come, and I can ask her a few questions as well, and help clarification.
Okay, hold on, let me make sure I'm understanding. So, so, so the head of that program's coming to Winthrop on, at 2 o'clock on August the 1st? Are you saying you wanna be there in order?
I thought that we're coming here to the meeting.
No, no, no.
Okay. I'll make a point to go see her there.
Yeah, so our next meeting will be August the 4th, and so, you know, that, that timetable would work.
Yeah, yeah. That sounds great, thank you.
And, and also, while I have the mic, to a point that you made, Aaron, we agree with you, like, you know, if Mike and I were Monday morning quarterbacks, we probably would've advocated for doing these energy audits before putting in the, the heat pumps. And it's actually one, so when this Community Resilience Partnership comes and talks to us, one of the things that they're going to be seeking is, tell us about your experience, do you have any suggestions for us? And Mike and I have already talked about this, and Mike's gonna be part of that conversation is, we're gonna strongly recommend to them that before they approve these projects, that they first, maybe even require a community to have an energy audit.
Sure.
And to that point, the reason why I wanted the invite there was also because I, and maybe Mike can shed some light onto this, who, and, and did you know, also, I wanna know, that they would lock our other heating source? Was that something you knew?
No, I, I mean, my, my intention all along was that we would still have it, maintain it, but not use it unless.
Can you speak to that?
Unless something went wrong with the heat pump.
I wanna know why. That's gonna be my feedback to them, is like, was it a part of the program through Efficiency Main?
The stipulation through Efficiency Main is to run the heat pumps as your primary heat source. That's it. The, the window dressing of the boxes over the top of the thermostats was to discourage the use of them.
So they could've turned it on?
Absolutely. And they knew that. And there was a pile of keys on Aaron's desk, the message, downstairs.
All right, well, that's good to know, because then I was, I thought it was mandated through this program. All right.
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and do keep in mind, I mean, we're talking about the Community Resilience Partnership, so they have, their vested interest is to see that communities become less reliant on fossil fuels, and, and more so on, you know, it, more energy efficient ways to heat and cool.
I got a question for you, Steve. Can you come back? Thank you. Yeah, sorry, sorry to pull you back up, so. I just, so there's a lot of talk of, everyone's talking about plan, right? And, and I understand that's what it's called, but it's more of a study with, with like recommendations, right? That's, that's what we're talking about here. Like, we could, we could opt out of, like, I assume you could get different levels of, of how far they go, right?
I am not a planner.
Yeah.
And I would say that probably most of the entities and organizations that do this would likely be able to give you a suite of options, and say, here's the middle, middle ground, high ground, and low ground. And I think even recommendations might be too strong of what, of what it says. I don't think it ever says, you, you should do this. I think could is probably thinking about federal regulation language. There's a lot of you shalls, you, you coulds, you mights, and you mayes. And I think this falls under, like, the town could consider this in the future if this is a priority.
Yeah, so it's more of a study in nature than anything. Okay.
Yeah, it studies your geography, studies highest and best use, studies existing wildlife corridors, studies high, high, high value agricultural lands, and that like, and, and I'll take the, just the opportunity to, Jim, you didn't ask for my input on grant writing, but if I was writing the grant, and there was a concern that maybe there needs to be some additional expenses that the studies provide, you might draft it so that it says, and any funds not spent on the audit may be used to implement findings from the audit. So that way, we, we set ourselves up for the best likelihood to use the entire $75,000?
Do you have a comment?
I mean, I have the same concerns Rory does about, you know, open space and town
So I just wanna say to them, to do it now, while you and Roy and Andy are on the council, because this is gonna be an opportunity to draft that plan and put those guardrails in place, whereas if we wait, another council could easily do that in the future, and then there's no guidance. This is your chance to have input into it as well. It's just my thought process. Have a process, right? I mean, you could say, we don't, this is what we want.
Just becomes a tool.
Andy, you have a comment? And then we have our town planner, Don.
I don't wanna, I suspect that Roy, I, and you are all in general agreement. The other side of the story is, that the stream that my uncle boated in, and it was too shrunken for me to do anything but catch that pool's in, is now a concrete sluiceway. And so in New Jersey, where I grew up, clearly, they didn't have good zoning and an open space plan. Okay? You know, the stream was so deteriorated, they had to make it a sluiceway. So, you know, I'm on both sides of it, but I would generally fall on landowners' rights. And opening this leaves to intrude upon landowners' rights.
Don?
I just wanted to, what Steve said was excellent, and I agree with everything he stated. And it is a tool, I've heard a number of you mentioning that it's a tool, and it helps informs the council, if there are regulatory measures that come out of it, and there may or may not be, it depends, maybe it would be all incentive based, but that always would go to you. That's not something that another entity could approve by state law, only you all can approve, changes to the land use requirements and the zoning ordinance. But it does help inform decisions, and it can identify opportunities, and I'll give you an example. Just last week, the town manager and I met with the Kennebec Land Trust and talked about something that's been identified in previous plans, which is connecting the downtown and the Gret Trail up to Pisgah. So if you had an open space plan that identified that, what that allows you to do is to identify properties that could help make that, that connection, and maybe, you know, approach them to purchase easements. If there, if there are funds available, grants available, that might help that, for that purpose. If there is a development, is there an incentive that you could offer to a developer who's gonna say, do a subdivision that would allow public access on a trail, somewhere through their property, to help make that connection? So it's just identifying that big picture down the road. It is not regulatory whatsoever. It helps inform decisions. If money becomes available, it's very helpful, because it prioritizes what the community wants. And there is a community consensus component to it, so there will be public input, and we'll do the, the best that we can to make sure that that is inclusive as possible, and not all of the planning measures and what you do. So hopefully, what the end result is, is gonna be something that you feel comfortable relying on, that this is what the community wants. And so how do we achieve those goals? And it could be something regulatory, but it is, it's definitely not a requirement. There's all different ways to achieve things.
I think it's also important to note that an open space plan is not a tool to engage in a land grab, that if That if the town wanted someone's property, they'd have to purchase it.
I'm not saying a land grab. I'm saying changing zoning, changing ordinances to push toward what they, what this opens place, open space plan designates.
But that's it, Roy. There's no designation. It identifies opportunities for the town to either conserve open or green spaces or to make those connections that Dawn was just talking about. I mean, we've seen it in planning document after planning document that we want connector trails. And so this open space plan identifies opportunities to do that. And, and what Dawn just alluded to is there are state grant opportunities in order to acquire easements. But in order to do that, you've got to have a plan in place so that you can show the granting agency that there's a plan in place for actually getting this done. And so again, I don't think we are in any way, shape or form trying to take away anyone's private property rights or their property. It's just, it just identifies opportunities to realize things that the commute, like Dawn said, that the community says is important to them, whether it's ballfields, parks, trails, connector trails. Whatever the case, wildlife habitat, whatever the case might be.
Questions or comments?
Conservation Commission. I'd just like to, to say that both the 2010 comprehensive plan and the 2024 comprehensive plan had an open space plan as a short-term goal. The community adopted and was behind those plans. I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the reluctance to go ahead with a plan knowing that it provides for community input and that it's not regulatory. It, it is just identifying, I mean, I think of snowmobile trails as a perfect example of, you know, pieces of property could, could cut off significant routes. And if we identified those in a plan, then at least we would be aware if something came up. But I, I just would want to say that, you know, this has been a priority in the last two comprehensive plans. So I hope you'll consider it.
Thank you, Jill.
Council decides to go forward with it, I think it needs to be abundantly clear. This is not a property grab, that this is not. It is to identify pieces of land that are there.
Are you looking for direction?
Well, I, I think, I think with the questions that Jim raised, which are very legitimate questions, I think it would behoove us to engage in that conversation on August the 4th. Come back and report back to you folks on August, August the 1st. Does it say August 1st?
It said August 2nd.
No, no, August the 1st is the conversation with CRP and then our next council meeting is August the 4th.
That still gives us plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but, you know, this is our third application for the same grant, so we've become pretty proficient in writing.
So I remember what my question is. Can I talk about the maybe seeking another grant as potentially a source for funds to actually do some of the energy audit recommendations? I want to make sure that we have our eyes on the ball because we have winter coming in less than six months and those, some of those need to be done before winter, not next year.
Totally, totally agree. And that's why, I mean, I've been in close contact with the ambulance station chief in particular. And we both realize the urgency of getting something done. We just don't want to pay $71,000 for it.
I understand that, but we did let five pipes break last year in the ambulance station, right?
I can only address what's ahead of us, not what's behind.
But they know they have keys to the previous working, non-causing pipe.
I'll, I'll make sure that they're aware of that and Michael helped me.
Can I just address that comment? Keys or no keys, it, it wouldn't have solved the issue. We reconnected all the disconnected air ducts up, up in the attic space. We made everybody aware that there was an insulation problem, a severe insulation problem. So that, that was July of last year that that was brought forth.
So that means there's no heat accessing up there at all now?
There shouldn't be heat in the attic. The attic is a, is a cold space. There should not be a heat source in the attic. There was a heat source in the attic and it was disconnected ductwork.
Thank you, Mr. Ketchum.
Yeah, and so one of the things that we're, we're checking with vendors is if we just like wrap the pipes this winter, is that going to get us through the winter without anything bursting?
All right, so we'll talk about this again at our next meeting. Thank you. We'll move on to item 106, discussion and consideration of rules for the town beaches. And currently we have rules for the beach that pertains to Marana Cook. What we're looking at is now updating this to include the East Winthrop Beach as that has been acquired since this was last amended in 2015. We do have our recreation director, Lonnie Steves, is here.
Yeah, I didn't know that that was the purpose of the, of this was to talk about East Winthrop, so.
It's, it's not, it's not.
Oh, okay.
It's just all beaches.
Yes, so, so, so let me be clear. The council in 2015 approved rules, but they only apply to Marana Cook Lake Beach. And we recently had a citizen come to us and tell us that she had concerns about what was going on at the East Winthrop Beach. And there's a sign posted there. When you look at the sign there, it's got a different set of rules than what we have at Marana Cook Lake Beach. So what we've decided is let's adopt a set of rules that apply to all beaches. Right now, Marana Cook and East Winthrop Beach and any future beaches that we might acquire. So these are more sort of, I guess you could say, universal in nature than simply, you know, what's good for either East Winthrop or Marana Cook.
Okay. I can tell you that at Marana Cook Beach, we've, we've, we've kind of, I, I gave Anthony the, what we're currently using is our standard operating procedures on, on the Winthrop Beach. That the beach is tobacco-free zone, e-cigarettes are included. The beach is a private beach for Winthrop residents and their guests only. And I know that that becomes a point of contention most years. I can tell you and I will tell the public that our standard operating procedure on the Winthrop Beach is if you come and obey our rules, we don't care where you're from. But if you become a problem on the beach, the first question you will be asked by my staff is, where are you from? And if they're not from Winthrop, then they're asked to leave. If they are from Winthrop, then they're asked to please, you know, abide by the rules. And if not, then we key the mic and get the police down there. And that's kind of come, I remember when we met with Anthony, I think the first time, one of the things he said was we wanted to make our community as welcoming as possible. And so when people are visiting Winthrop and are in town for, for whatever they're in town for, to be able to make the, our beaches as accommodating as possible. We currently operate under the policy of 10 years old, must, children under 10 must be accompanied by an adult or babysitter. A change that we made from the last set of beach rules that were put in, and this was after we studied, we made contact with Monmouth and several other beaches around, community beaches that most beaches had gone to allowing people to swim with a PDF, a certified coast guard PDF or a noodle, the, the big pool noodles. Thing we do not allow is anything that is inflated by air. So in other words, if you see the puddle jumpers that kids wear, the, the floaties on their arms that have air in them, children are not allowed with those. All of a sudden those go, the air comes out of them and all of a sudden somebody can't, can't handle it anymore. We don't allow boogie boards out there because the boogie boards, kids get a little confident on those and they slip out and all of a sudden you're over your head and stuff. So it's a PDF or the noodle. That's pretty much all that we allow inside our swim area. I think also in the old, the old rules used to say lifeguards are not responsible for swimming outside the roped area. Swimmers from inside the roped area are asked to not swim to outside or over the ropes. The problem that we have with that is that our lifeguards have a responsibility that if you are lifeguarding and somebody in the middle of the lake looks like they're in trouble, whether they're inside or outside of our ropes, they have to go, they at least have to attempt a rescue. So saying that, you know, we're going to, we're going to guard our beach. We're going to guard the beach. We'd like to guard inside the ropes as our majority of the time, but we're keeping an eye on everybody. No pets, no glass bottles, no bicycles. Somebody somewhere along the line this winter left us a lovely new bike rack down on our beach. And day caring, we painted it and so it looks better and so bicycles can go there. Beach staff also will occasionally ask people to turn down music that may be offensive or a little too loud for a family oriented area. And again, the horseplay, offensive language inappropriate. We'll ask you to leave the beach. The police come down on a very regular basis. On the old rules, it says run, where is it? Says something about, to try to keep people, it's running, pushing, flips, turns, diving from the ladders on the platform or touching lifeguard equipment is prohibited on the dock. Well, we simply don't want you on the dock now. So that, that rule, that rule kind of needs to go because we don't want you on the cement thing out there anyway because it's, it's a hazard. And so that's what, that's the rules that we're operating on, on, on our beach. I would think that for the most part, those could, those, those rules could be flipped over to the East Winthrop Beach just as easily.
Yeah, I think what you have before you is maybe a little bit more extensive than what Lonnie has, has just talked about. And, and as a, for instance, I mean, there's, there's some disagreement between the rules. At East Winthrop is kids no younger than 10. And at Marana Cook is, it's, the rules that we're adopting 2015 say no, no one younger than eight. And so when I talked with both Lonnie and the police chief about that, they agreed 10 was the better standard. Same thing with ours. East Winthrop says sundown, the sun up, the beach is closed. Marana Cook says 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And again, everyone agreed that that, that was probably the better standard. So, so I think, I think what you've got before you touches on most everything that, that Lonnie talked about. It's just a little bit more encompassing.
James and then Andy.
Lonnie, do we have a lifeguard at the East Winthrop Beach? Okay, that's one question. And this question's more for Anthony. And I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we had this discussion. Should we identify that any town beach in the verbiage versus identifying these beaches? In case we adopt another town beach that we don't have to go through this process again? So if another beach gets created, it already encompassed because it's a town beach versus labeling it, we just say any Winthrop town publicly owned beach?
Yeah, so, so the, the purposefully, the title of this is Rules and Regulations for Town of Winthrop Beaches.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure I missed that. I jumped down to the rules and forgot that first part.
And again, so what you have currently applies only to Marana Cook.
Right, super, thank you.
Marana Cook is the only certified beach that we have in our, in our program, in our, in our community. We get from the state, we get a cert, certificate every five years certifying our beach. And so our, the East Winthrop Beach is not a certified beach.
It is right now.
Yeah, I don't have a certificate for it.
Well, I'll find you one.
Okay.
I was part of, who did that? But anyway, I was going to say something along the lines of what Jim said, but Anthony obviously showed us that he has that covered. One thing I found in my experience as an innkeeper and a crowded, on a crowded property and swim area is I found, as much as my guests often complained, I would not allow horseshoes and quates. It's just too dangerous throwing those things around. I would suggest.
We don't have any, we don't have any games on, on the beach. We've gotten rid of, they haven't been there, I think, for over 10 years. There were barbecue grills there at one time. Now the only grills are on, on Norcross. Yeah.
I mean, I would just suggest that you mention that, you know, horseshoes and quates, you know, aren't allowed. I mean.
I'm, I'm sorry, Andy, you said horseshoes and?
Quates are the round ones. Horseshoes are the horseshoes.
I'm not familiar with that term.
You drive an iron pipe in the ground and you start throwing steel around in a crowded recreational area. And, you know, we found that we had to prohibit it.
So.
Good.
Change?
No, I, I just leave that up to Lonnie.
Can I give you one other, a couple of updates about summer?
Before, before we move on to that, let's, let's finish with the rules. Because what I really was hoping for tonight is the council is going to adopt these updated rules so that they applied not just to Marana Cook, but to East Winthrop and any future beaches.
That's what I was going to say, pending any other revisions, all right, Linda?
Second.
Is there, well, I was just going to say, can we just, if they identify moving forward that it can be amended by both of them versus having to come straight back to the council?
It's, it's a policy, so I'm, I'm, I think.
Okay. All right.
Got a motion and a second? Any other further discussion? All in favor? All are in favor?
Two things. Number one, the project down to the office is moving at a snail's pace, but it's moving. The second thing is probably next year during budget time, we're going to have to have a very serious discussion about the wood docks down, the wooden walkway down on the beach. It has deteriorated to a point where it's, it's now falling apart. And it's going to need to go eventually. But that, the next step of what do you replace it with is going to be the big issue because I, I think that you're probably going to be, obviously we're going to end up having to, somebody's calling me already. We're going to have to replace it with some, there's going to have to be some permitting done with the state to work that close to the water. But that walkway's been there a long while. It's served its useful purpose and now it just, it, it's, it's now dangerous. I mean, the piece we did last year by putting the, the curbing around and putting the stone dust in was brilliant. I mean, that thing has been great. The staff loves it. Everybody likes it. There's never, there's nobody, you know, you know, catching a foot and catching a sandal on it. It's great, but the other piece is starting to really become, it's, it's looked bad and it, and it's starting to fall apart, so. I don't, I, Linda, I've looked on, I looked at the state stuff and I didn't, I didn't identify anything there because, you know, I think that that would be a piece of it. I mean, obviously if there's a grant out there that we could do something about that cement monstrosity in the middle of the lake. This year it has probably sunk another two inches. The, the cement has sunk down another two inches. There's more steel exposed this year than there was last year. So it's, it's moving significantly.
So as far as the boardwalk, this is the first I'm hearing about. But Kevin and I will consult. I bet we can come up with some solutions.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think I, I was going to have the girls call you one time and have you come down and take a look at it because I, you know, it's just, it's pretty ugly.
Lonnie's identified it every time it's an issue. So, I mean, you have brought it up.
Oh, yeah.
Lonnie, I have a quick question for you. Just rolling back in my youth days of running on the Winthrop Beach. And I understand we put the boardwalk in there and I'm sure you guys will find out. Was there a reason why, other than maybe DEP didn't like that we maybe put sand back that might have?
Can't put sand on the beach.
Because I know other places do.
The sand from our beach was.
Drifting down into the, down into the dam.
Into their, into the turbines down in the mill. And so that was, we were, when Steph Lunt was here, when you were a little guy running around on the beach, the sand fairy used to come to the beach every.
Yes. It was great when I was a kid.
It was great. The sand fairy would, if you notice the, one of the rocks near the walkway, when you walk across, has a, a bolt with a big hole in it.
Yeah.
So they could come in, pick it up, move the rock, back the truck in, dump the sand, drive out. And so, yeah, that's, but we haven't been able to have the sand fairy visit us in a very long time.
Yeah, I'm sure. Do you have any recommendations or had any success or talks with people, what they might use other than the boardwalk? I think it's been nice, but just seems, it seems like a wooden platform seems kind of still a little dangerous.
I, I think, well, Andy will remember when, when we had the grant, when we were working on that grant, the land use, the architect that we had at that time really wanted to do. The land use, the architect that we had at that time really wanted to do, he was very, he was very much for very big pieces of stone or granite. He wasn't, he really wanted the, the big, big stuff. But I, I, I think we all kind of felt like that might have been a little overkill, that stone would probably be better.
Okay.
But we gotta, we've gotta do something because I, I probably got them in my record someplace. We had an erosion problem there, that that beach from the, from the level of the beach was all the way down to the water level. There was just, it just dropped straight down, and that's why the boardwalk was built, was to try to create a terrorist way so people could get down to the beach. And over the years, just the erosion of the beach is just kind of taking it away, so.
I wonder if they'd allow us to put a breakwater in there, point to help keep that from drifting down into the mill stream.
Once upon a time, a, we did a hydraulic study, we had a guy come in and drop a billion ping pong balls up by the, up by Mrs. Cagni's place up there. And we watched him come in and they did, they just circled like this, and the dock broke it up. If you didn't have that dock there, that little point that jets out would be gone and you'd have a flat beach all the way down to the mill stream. So, yeah.
Thank you.
That's just history lesson.
Did you have one question?
Yeah, George, just kind of, is, is there any chance that Maine Municipal, you know, for liability purposes would identify funding sources for improvements? In the East Winthrop Beach too, I see huge liabilities all over the place. Is there anything that we can talk to them about?
I'm not aware of MMA, I mean, they're in.
Whoever does.
They are an insurer, so they, they come up and clean up your damage, but don't.
They're not proactive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Andy, final comment, question?
Just to clarify, uh, what Lonnie mentioned about the, um, the fence out there. The landscape architect at the time recommended replacing those steps with granite. And then for riprap on the entire project, he was using slab riprap so that it was easier with infill, uh, small, of small gravel. And that made it a lot easier for people to use rather than, um, broken granite riprap. That's all, I'm done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steves. So at this time, we will move on to item 107, Discussion and Consideration of an Artificial Intelligence Policy. I'll turn this over to our town manager. And thank you, everyone, for attending. Have a good night.
So I've done quite a bit of training recently on artificial intelligence, just because you can see that train coming. And we need to be on board so that we can make a good and efficient use of that within our organization. But it doesn't, but it does come with risk. And so with the training that I've gotten, I hear continually that organizations need an organizational policy in order to ensure that artificial intelligence is being used in good and productive ways and that there are safeguards in place. So what you have before you is a policy that we drafted. It takes from a template that was developed by the IT Director for the Maine Municipal Association. It incorporates some language from a pending proposal that will soon go before the Library Board of Trustees. And we did incorporate some recommendations from our, from the town attorney who has reviewed this and, and drafted it. And so, so in essence, you know, we're just really, at this point, dipping our toe into the AI waters. But before we go any deeper, we want to make sure that we have a policy that addresses that. And some key components that I, the, the draft that you see, you can see that there's still some comments that I made. For, for instance, some applications are pre-approved, that way they don't have to come to the town manager ever the time they're gonna use ChatGPT to create a piece of content. But as we're learning, there are some platforms like Grok that we don't want our employees on. And if you don't know what Grok is, then I'll be happy to, to, to talk with you about it after the.
What is the reasoning for that?
So Grok is a chatbot that has expressed some anti-Semite messaging on what was formerly known as Twitter. So it's not the sort of platform that we would want our employees working on for those reasons. So, so some of the, some platforms will be pre-approved, but other than that, we want to make sure that people are, that we're doing our due diligence and researching other platforms before they're started to be used. And we also want to make sure that people are, for goodness sakes, not putting any sort of personal information on open source AI. So there's a difference between open source and closed source. Closed source, you would typically contract with someone in order to, to use AI to provide a specific function for you. Open source is like ChatGPT, so anything you put on ChatGPT becomes part of that engine and can be used anywhere around the world, depending upon whatever, you know, ChatGPT is prompted to do. And so we just want to make sure that personal and private information is not on an open source AI system.
So saying like the town attorney cannot use AI in drafting, you know, like legal?
Oh, yes, it does, actually, yeah, it, it talks about. Yeah, legal opinions, opinions related to the applicability to towns and policies. In fact, our town attorney told me that she does have some clients who say, well, ChatGPT is now my attorney. And she's like, good luck with that.
I'm Gil Susie, and sorry I'm late to this game, Anthony, I should have made some comments about this a little bit earlier. The State of Maine's AI Task Force is rolling out their policy in October. It might behoove us to wait a couple of months and see what they're, but they've got up their sleeve. One of the things that they are recommending is an, an AI platform entitled Civic Plus. And it's geared for small towns, 6,000 to 10,000 in population. And again, independent of, of the Maine Municipal Association. So again, we might want to take a look, you know, might, we might want to wait just a little bit instead of having to revise the policy again in November or December of, of, of this year or next year.
Don't we use Civic Plus?
It's interesting, as soon as you said that, Gil, so Civic Plus is the vendor that we use to develop and host our website. And so I wonder if it's, but I'm unaware of Civic Plus offering any sort of AI tool at this point. But that's, that's, I just made a note, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check with them tomorrow about that.
They're also recommending Microsoft's AZ. And again, just one of those things that doesn't seem to hit our list of six platforms that we're, that you're looking at as approved. And, and I guess that's the other concern I have. As of 5/15 this afternoon, there's over 5,000 AI applications out there. Pick, pick your poison, right? Some of them, some of them, they go from free to very expensive. They go from single task to, again, multitask type environments. So I, I really don't know if we really want to put a limit on, on these six. If the idea is to try to monitor that, again, I'm, I'm kind of concerned, you know, having dealt with that in the past. People can go home and then run their own Grok two or three or four and then come back and then plug that in and call that, that, that came from ChatGTP, right? So, so again, that's, that's a concern that I, you know, that, that I think we really need to, to. I'm not a proponent of going slow, we really, we're probably six months behind the eight ball on this. But at the same time, I think we really need to look at what's available out there. And, and limiting it to six, I, I know, again, it makes, especially the grimly one, I could use that one, that's not a problem. But there, there are others out there, again, according to the task force. They also named a Google application, but that's more of a, you have a citizen facing application where you can, you can interact with it, like what time's the next town council meeting and the thing replies, you know, like when you, you've seen those little chatbots online, they're all over the place. Some of the, again, some of these things are free, some of these things require a little bit more handholding and, and observation from, from particular managers. So those, those are the, the couple of things that I had. And again, thank you for, for listening and, you know, if we, if we want to, my recommendation would be to postpone this and wait until the state's AI task force comes out with their policy and see how our policy aligns with that. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
You just said in October.
They said October, yeah, the timeframe, I don't know if it's early or late, but you know, the state, they didn't say the year. Thank you. Any questions at all?
Thank you, Mr. Susie.
All right, thank you.
Ladies, gentlemen, my name is Timothy Adams, and like Mr. Susie, I too owed Anthony a response to this before tonight, but here I am. Couple of comments, I'll keep this brief, but particularly with section three, paragraph E. I think it's really important that we have some definitions of PII and EPHI, not just this is what it means, but more so examples, is it names, addresses, phone numbers, emails? What constitutes protected data? I think it's very easy to make the mistake of dropping the wrong Excel document into ChatGPT, asking it to arrange something in a particular way. And now a whole bunch of citizens that really liked keeping their stuff private is now cannon fodder for the next guy's query. So following that, I'd like to see some kind of employee training on data categorizations. I think it'd be important to address that employees using these systems have some type of training on recognizing these protected data pieces. And I think a step in the right direction would also be some kind of user agreement that employees should be signing.
I had another question, a quick question. Anthony, did, did we reach out to department heads and see if they have, like, I know the ambulance service, if they decided to utilize some type of open AI for formatting their runs and stuff? I could see, you know, protected HPI, stuff like that, did you ever talk to them?
This has been shared with the directors.
Okay.
Now, I, I just want to make a comment, Tim, thanks for coming up, because I think that's a really good point, is making, having to make sure they have some decent training of what they are putting in the queries, because it will create a pretty good long string, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Did you also, did we also opt in for that state side security?
Mm-hmm.
Just curious, that's also something that they've talked about, I think, a little bit as far as training. So as far as the policy from the council, is this something that we just in tableing or approving or amending?
I would, I'd want to table it for now, I'd like to see what the state may have, just so we don't have to visit it again.
Who is a second to table? Second? So move to table. Do we have a time or date, we want to just table this till later?
Let me check into more about what Gil said and, and we'll get it, we won't dawdle, as soon as, as we can, we'll get it back on a agenda.
Sounds good, all in favor? All are in favor, thank you, thank you very much for your comments. All right, moving on to item 108, Consideration of Ratifying a Change in the Maine Purse Retirement Plan for EMS Employees Effective August 1, 2025.
Yeah, this is just a mere formality, Maine Purse requires that the legislative body act, you may recall that in our current collective bargaining agreement with the ambulance service, that this is the year that we change their retirement plan to a 3C plan. And all Maine Purse needs is a signed order signifying that the council has approved this.
So I'll make a motion to approve order 2025-07 as written.
Any discussion? All in favor? In favor, thank you. Moving on to item 109, Consideration of Recommendations from the Appointments Committee.
Make a motion to appoint Martha, Martha Copperthwaite to the Conservation Commission. This is a new application, if you wanted to take a look at it.
And, and Martha's actually here, God love her, she stayed for the whole meeting?
Second. Any discussion? And we do have our application here, thank you for coming and attending tonight, any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor, thank you very much. Item 108, Consideration of June 2025 Disbursement Warrants.
I'd like to put this off till the next meeting, just because I've had a chance to really review it.
Me too, yeah.
All in favor to table? Favor, thank you, so to the next meeting. All right, so at this time, we will open up for public comment, is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to make any final comments? Not hearing anything, not seeing anything online, we will move on to the town manager's report.
So just on the very rare off chance that you haven't read all of the emails I sent to you, I just want to reiterate that we've cleared another hurdle in getting the $1.1 million federal earmark for our radio communications upgrade. Heard from both of our US senators' offices over the past week. And that has, that project has been approved as part of the package by the Senate Appropriations Committee. So hopefully, the next step is full approval by the Senate and then by the House. And so we'll see what happens, but our fingers are still firmly crossed. Let's see, oh, we got good news, this, uh, this past week, the local road program, we get funds from that each year from, from fuel tax, and our allocation is increasing by $4,000 to nearly $74,000 this coming year. So that's good, more monies from the state's always good news. We talked about the ambulance station on the 18th, Chief Moretta will be here and he's gonna give you a presentation on ambulances. And we're gonna make some recommendations about how we might move forward in regards to our ambulance fleet. Should have mentioned this while the cemetery committee was here, but we also have year-end numbers, fiscal year numbers for the cemetery trust. And it grew by $19,000 this past fiscal year, so the balance is currently at $664,000 and change. So also great news. Next Monday, our finance, our director, Nick Poole, and are meeting with a workplace safety consultant who specializes in helping municipalities enroll in the SHAPE program. Now, our fire department already is involved in the SHAPE program, which is, as I said, a workplace safety program. But the benefit is this, is once we're in this program, we can encourage some insurance savings as a result of being in it. And we can get to that top tier, remember I talked to you about the MMA program, the worker safety program? There's three tiers, and the top tier, you save 10% on your workers' comp insurance, so this will help us get there faster. So we're starting discussions with the consultant who can help us with that process. Our town clerk was here earlier and she wanted just to assure you that the new later hours on Wednesday, we're seeing lots of traffic between 4:30 and 6:00 on Wednesday, so people are really taking advantage of those hours. So that's good, that we're more accessible to the public. Are the nomination papers for the next town council election will be available starting July the 28th. So the election's in November, and papers are available beginning July 28th. And then you can see I have this camera angle up here, because that camera back there was glitching badly. And ProAV will be here at our next meeting to look at that, check out our sound, see if our sound levels need to be adjusted in order to ensure that everything is, that one's fine, that's the, oh, excuse me, you're right, you're right, it's that camera, yeah. But they're gonna be here just to adjust the sound levels, just to make sure everyone can hear really well, and that's all I have.
I had a couple of things I just want to comment on, I know our director of Public Works is here, and I just want to thank him for doing a great job. I think it'll see a lot of improvements on the roads and making some solid improvement, so. I think it's blossom hearing it in the community as well, so seeing the roads get repaired and repaved, and I know there's been a big push, so good job there.
Yeah, I, I, I hear lots of great things about Kevin Doral, our new Public Works.
Well, I didn't say that.
I sure, I, I, I share those at the risk of, you know, his head swelling, we have to butter it to get in. have to butter it to get it, get it inside the building, but.
So, so, so thank you. The other quick question and, you know, is thanks to Craig Hickman and Davis asked us about getting the, uh, bill passed for the, uh, G A assistance reimbursement. So that's very positive. I think that's coming maybe September, October at the latest?
September 23rd.
Okay. Um, how is that going, uh, with that down there currently now? Not that it affects them at all, but how is it, the, the Zisk house and the relationships with the G A, the new G A, uh, person that's administering that? Is she finding any difficulties or?
No, no, not at all. And in fact, I think they appreciate the fact that she's here because, you know, when Nick and I were processing the applications, we had a very short window each week in which we were allowing them to do that. And so now they get a new client, they bring the application, arrange an interview with Jen and Jen can see them, you know.
How's the success rate right now with, as far as getting the G A? Are we, there's a long term down there for a lot of the residents or are we finding it to be a revolving door quite frequently?
You, you have a mix of both.
Okay.
Um, you know, I will say this, we've had more success in recent months and weeks in getting people employed down there, I think, than we had previously. And I think that's because we've just been really adamant about holding their, their feet to the fire. And, you know, a lot of them want to work, they have transportation issues a lot of the times, but they've, you know, frankly, one of the best places that they found employment here in the downtown area is the Redemption Center. And so they've hired quite a number of, uh, of people at the Redemption Center.
Super. Great, thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've actually had quite a bit of luck, um, getting day labor from the Zisk house. They'll come out, help various residents, elderly people, mowing roofs, mowing lawns, uh, raking leaves, that kind of thing. It's, there's, there's cadre of probably five down there that are, you know, usually will take my calls and go out and helping the community like that.
In addition to what James had said, uh, just another one of our employees, the, um, analysis of land use applications with Dawn and, uh, how thorough she's been with that. So thank you to Dawn for working, uh, with the planning board and the residents and making sure that those are very in-depth.
They, they love Dawn, the planning board loves Dawn. Um, this pains me to say so, but maybe even a little bit more than the town council loves the town manager.
Anyway, uh, also last Thursday, uh, with United Way, E J Prescott, you confirmed that they painted the front of the school?
They painted the, uh, the front of the grade school. Now there's sort of the very top part, they didn't go up that high, so that still is yet to be done, but they painted the, uh, little kiosk down there at the, uh, municipal parking lot and did some work in our, um, uh, in our small conference room, didn't finish the small conference room, so, uh, the school maintenance people are going to finish that job in there.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, they were very helpful.
Yeah, volunteering, uh, their time for that. And then also, just as a reminder, this Saturday, we have the Winthrop Heritage Day.
Oh, that's right. Yep.
We're the exact times, nine to three, I think.
I think it was 10 to 5.
Right outside, but that's it. Anything else from the council? All right, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we adjourn?
All in favor? All right, adjourned at 7:54. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending. You have a good night.